Oh, second, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Thank you ever so kindly.
I'm just listening to her.
The first item of business, I gotta go out of order here, and I know everybody has my committee meetings in front of them, minutes, excuse me, in front of them, but I'm gonna go a little bit out of order. I've asked Superintendent Mike Tyler to attend our meeting this evening since we had the public hearing last week with regards to the $734,000 loan order. So I've asked him to come and speak before us, and while he's here, I'd also, I'm gonna ask him to speak with regards to the dump truck that came down before us last week in last week's communication from the mayor. So I'd like to ask Superintendent Michael Tyler to please attend the podium.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for coming in this evening, and I, I know that you are a basketball coach.
I am. I didn't come dressed for that. I didn't know we're on TV tonight. I thought we were supposed to, some committees weren't televised, but yes.
It's no worries, and thank you very much for leaving your son's practice. So, Michael, last week we did have the public hearing, and I know that we, several of us were able to attend the meeting that I held on that Saturday morning down at the Public Works Yard, and so, and Barry Lacass was here before us last week, and I'm sure you watched the recordings of the meeting to hear what he had to say about the loan order and, and the questions that were asked, and I just wanted to open up the floor right now to anyone if they have any questions for the superintendent with regards to this, the equipment that he needs, which we all know they're in dire need of, and unfortunately, a lot of the equipment is not going to be here with us, and at least for a year. We do know that, we were told that before, but does anyone have any questions? Please, Mr. Blair.
I'd just like to make a comment. I'm very much in favor of the equipment, and even your car, so don't take it personal when I, I speak against the high.
Thank you very much.
I know you need one. I just don't think personally, think that that's the right vehicle for the city to be buying at this time, any department, that you should have a car as a vehicle.
Thank you.
I spoke against it, but I didn't want you to take it personal, I just, I spoke against the vehicle, not the need.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. I don't take things personally. I'm here to represent my department, it's nothing personal, and never will be that way. First of all, I would like to apologize for not being here at the public hearing. I had full intent on being here, I had a situation out of control, I say, I like to call it nothing bad, but it required dad. So, I'm here tonight to answer those questions, but again, I fully wanted to be here at that time to answer the questions for you, but I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Counselor Dillan.
I don't really have any que, well, actually I do. I fully support the new vehicles, I know how desperately you need them. My concern is getting through this year. Are we gonna make it through with what we have? How bet, like, I'm concerned about that.
Well, I, that's a, it's a great question, it's actually a two-part. I mean, we've been band-aiding these things for a long time, a lot longer than I've, since I've been here.
Can we get one more season out of them?
But, we're not expecting two of the larger trucks to go down almost simultaneously, so, we will have to make do. I mean, we have no, we have no choice, those trucks cannot go back on the road. I think, you seen that day, and even that's on one of the requests on here, H-25 was not part of the presentation that I gave to the city council members that came to the highway yard that day. We witnessed it out in the yard, those three large trucks, but it wasn't part of this funding request originally coming down to the city council, so, there's, there's really nothing we can do, Counselor Dillan. It's, we're gonna do our best, it's not like we're gonna stop because we're down the truck. Unfortunately, we're not, we haven't been able to fill those needs with contractors, we're back out advertising, I think it was in today's paper.
It was.
You're gonna see even a sign on a vermic, but unfortunately, it's kinda late in the year for that. I think the intent was to put it out that the city raised rate, there's no more contracts, so maybe we can entice a couple companies that were not participating before, that they could have ten dollars more an hour, so.
Things crossed.
Again, I don't really have a straightforward answer to you at all, I can tell you is if there's ten trucks to plow, then we're gonna go out with ten trucks. If we have fifteen, we're gonna go out with fifteen.
Thank you. Counselor Blair.
I got one other question. I heard from another department head, that if you get a price from a vendor that you don't have to go off a bids for, the state bid list, for X number of dollars, and they can't supply this vehicle, you can go out and purchase that vehicle as long as it doesn't go over that from a private, another vendor?
We do have a right to do so. I think, but as I tried to explain to the city council that day, because, especially because of the dynamics of the trucks now, and everything's electronic, everything gives you a code, and that's how you diagnose anymore. It's not the, the old days like when you were working in the garage, so, we do have that option, but again, we'd like to convert and have the DPW at one time to be all internationals, all Fords, and all John Deas, so that way it just makes the mechanic job much easier.
Life easy, I understand that, I'm not questioning that one. I'm questioning the need for trucks we need immediately, and if you went out on the website for whatever, and you've got somebody in Springfield that's got one on the lot, you know, could you do that and get some vehicles in under that price?
We couldn't, but I would have to say that I've been doing this quite a few years, Bobby's been doing it for quite a few years, I mean, we've all come up with certain specifications we wanna see in these trucks that get the best value for our dollar. So those are the specifications that were put into that bid packet out there. So if you start lowering those specifications, in other words, going with a lower GPW.
I didn't, I didn't ask you to lower them, Olive said was, if there happens to be...
Okay, if there was, we would, yes.
Something out there, it would be advantageous for you to, and the price was under the bid list, why not, if we're gonna be that short on trucks throughout the winter?
We would certainly exhaust every avenue. If there's a quicker way to get these vehicles, we're going to use it, there's no doubt about that. The problem seems to be with international right now. As I explained to a couple council members, I don't think I explained it on Saturday, but especially international, they have this big thing with National Grid or whatever, when National Grid goes in, they order like five thousand trucks, so it just puts their production line so far back, because that's all they're producing, so, but absolutely, if there's another avenue to get the truck here quicker, if I could get it off somebody's lot with those specifications are pretty close in a month, we're gonna go get that truck in a month. So, as quick as we can do it, I would do that.
Okay, I, I just, I was told that it was possible, I just asked you to do it.
We would definitely exhaust it.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Delissio.
Thank you. Mike, thanks for taking the time that Saturday to kinda go through everything with this. Just a comment, but a question as well. So, you talked a little bit about the codes, so, if I'm understanding right, a lot of these new trucks and the way they're coming equipped, they're more computerized and there's more of a different need and a different ask of your mechanics, which is why we need to, we can't necessarily upgrade what's already kind of on the way out with some of these trucks as terms of being obsolete. Am I correct in understanding that?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, and then secondly, I remember going down, I wanna say it must have been 2011, 2012, with then Superintendent Clovis seeing some of these trucks, and him telling us, you know, they're on their last legs. What are the years on some of these trucks, a year of manufacture?
All the way back to 1988, the ones that we're replacing in 1988 to 1993.
So we've basically gotten what we can get out of this?
Yeah, I mean, I think, when speaking with Barry about, you know, how do we budget this, we were kinda talking about what's you, what should be the life expectation of a truck like this? I mean, it's been brought up before, we don't wanna pay pain for something when it's already not usable.
Sure.
Because of what these trucks do, I think we came to the thing, if we get fifteen years out of it, we're getting good. Only reason is they're on the road every day, and then they're pushing snow all winter long, so there's, they don't get a break, so, when you take that average of fifteen years, and now you're talking 1988, 1993, we've more than gotten our value out of these trucks.
Yep.
A complete safety issue now, and you have to draw a line somewhere, and, and I think that now it's the time. I did see, I did watch the tape last week, and I think Barry did do a great job, and I watched Chief Latence even talk about it. I should not be coming in front of the city council for three quarters of a million dollars of a capital improvement allotment in one year. That, that shouldn't happen. I do believe I should be able to come in front of the city council once a year for maybe $200,000 so I can stop rotating the fleet. As it's happening right now, we're basically not replacing anything until it's totally broken, and we can't do anything with it, and we're pocketing on the side of the yard, and we say we can't use it anymore. Now we're at the case because of the production of them where we're a year out. So we do need a rotating system and something that makes sense, and I will put one of those in front, but I will say, I think I gave the inventory sheet, I think everybody got it that big that we're here.
Yes, they do, yep.
You have to look on there and you'll see that the majority of the vehicles are not even the year 2000, so that's, that's a problem. That's a problem, but again, you know, I, I don't think I should have to come in front of you for this, you know, at one time shock. There needs to be a better plan in place, a cycle, I should say, to replace this equipment.
Counselor Conti.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mike, you confused me in your discussion about H-25, which is a 1993 Ford F-700. Did that go down?
The twin of H-24.
So it's out of service?
No, they're still using H-25 until something, until it breaks, and then we can't find power, that's the whole problem of H-24, why we have to take it out of service.
So I said virtually everything I needed to say at our meeting in your office, but I would like to publicly reinforce something you just said, is that, you know, a capital improvement plan for the DPW properly should have an annual replacement with a schedule much like the police department has, to, to keep the vehicles within that fifteen-year span, and some vehicles fifteen years is too long. So, I'm behind you on that, and, and looking at your inventory list, there's a lot of ketchup. And I said in the meeting that, you know, we, we need to fix this, so, much of what I need to say, I'm gonna say in our capital improvement review that's coming up in a month, and I want you to know that I'm philosophically behind you, and I believe that your methodology and your, your approach is heading in the right direction, and that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. Any other questions or comments regarding the $734,000? Michael, if you wouldn't mind just staying around for a minute, I'm not gonna actually read the motion just yet, but we all have it in front of us with regards to the dump truck, which did not come down in that communication, it didn't come down till last week, and I know that you had had the conversation with the mayor regarding the dump truck, 'cause that came, that had died off a little bit ago, correct?
That's right.
And that has been in the capital improvements for quite some time, correct?
As far as I can tell, that truck's been on the capital improvements for eight years, urgent priority.
So you wanna talk about it a little bit? Eight years later.
I don't wanna speak for the mayor, but I think, I think what happened was, when H-19 first went down, that was in the springtime, near the end of spring. So I told the mayor that the truck was out of service, and I told him that same thing, the truck's like a year out, so, I think his interpretation at that time was he was going to wait to certify free cash and see if he could, out of free cash, get us a truck. In the meantime, he said, well, I said, well, we need to look at, there's more than this, but we need to discuss it when you have the time to discuss it. So, a couple months later, when he came back down to the yard, and I actually showed him the rest of the fleet and what was going on, I think at that time he realized that one truck was, doesn't do anything. There needed to be a bigger plan in place, but I think that's how it happened, why I came in front of you tonight, where it's kinda separate from the, the larger request.
Okay, thank you. Any questions regarding that? Counselor Delissio.
Thanks, and Mike, I wanted to ask this the last time, but I think it, it all goes together. So, the trucks that we're gonna buy, so my, my kinda thought process is now we have more roadworks, right? We're expanding, there's more development, there's more roads. Channel Four today had a story on the internet that they're forecasting the snowy winter we've seen since 2015. So my question is, these trucks, are they multi-use? Can you use them, you know, for different tasks throughout the course of the year?
That's a great question, and, and yes, they will be. Again, I do not like to pick on my predecessors for the decisions that they made, I wasn't, it could have been a financial decision, I'm not sure why some of them were made, but, as long as I'm here, the truck will be a multi-use truck that is used all year long, it won't just be sitting there with a sander body on it that's used for snow. The city of Attleworth can't afford to have, these trucks should be out there all the time, because they, they are expensive, you know, so, and it saves the money when we're using our own vehicles compared to hiring a contractor at $115 or $125 an hour when you're just playing the driver overtime in a city-owned truck, I mean, so, to answer your question, all the trucks that are on that thing will be multi-use vehicles.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Michael, again, thank you very much for coming this evening, appreciate your time, and I'm sorry to take you away from your basketball coaching, and I wish you a very happy Thanksgiving to you and your family, and to all your employees.
Thank you very much, and we wish the same to you. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that being said, I'm gonna read those two motions first. I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor to approve the following loan order. Ordered that $734,000 be appropriated for the cost of purchasing and equipping Public Works Departmental vehicles' equipment, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow $734,000 under Section 7.1 of Chapter 44 of the general laws. Any premium received by the city upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this order, less any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay, to pay such costs by a like amount. Second, thank you ever so kindly. Are there any comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion is approved, approved, thank you. I'm gonna read the second one. I entertain a motion to approve the request of the, oops, excuse me, from the docket of December 3rd, 2019. I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor to transfer $150,267 from account 11241000-578380, Citywide Reserve Fund for Capital, to account 14201000-587069, Public Works Dump Truck, to replace a six-wheel dump truck recently taken off the road. Second. Thank you. Are there any comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion is approved. Okay, thirdly, we have a motion in front of us with regards to replacing a main on Franklin Street. It's a big water main that they've been having issues with, and I have asked Superintendent Courtney Wanchell to come to the podium to speak on behalf of this water main break. So Courtney, if you wouldn't, Superintendent Courtney Wanchell, if you wouldn't mind coming before us, I'd appreciate that. Thank you ever so much.
Thank you.
So Courtney, how long has this been an issue with Franklin Street?
We began receiving low-water pressure calls from residents on Franklin Street early September. The crew initially went out, a lot of the time a low-pressure call might be a leaky service, if they work the shut-off, they'll be able to tell, nothing like that. We went to try to look for leaks on the street using our own equipment, couldn't determine a leak location anywhere on the street. We brought in a leak detection service on October 1st. This contractor didn't actually hear anything leaking on Franklin Street. Their best guess for a leak was out on Dennis, the corner of Dennis and Franklin. So the crew excavated that area on October 8th, uncovered the main at Franklin and Dennis, and there was no leak present. October 18th, we sent the crew out, they excavated the areas of the low-pressure complaints, and again, we didn't uncover anything leaking. We did have a similar situation on High Street in the winter of 2017 to 18, same exact situation, started with low-pressure complaints on the street, excavated up and down the street, never determined a leak on High Street. And by the time we ended up replacing that main, four of the five houses on High Street had to be connected house to house by hoses with their neighbors, and when they uncovered that main, what they found was, it was an old inch and a half steel line serving the entire street, and it was basically just tiny, tiny pinhole leaks that we couldn't actually see when excavating, and also with the size of the, and the age of the main, it was ba, basically, you know, you have an inch and a half main, and it was down to about a half inch, serving an entire street. We know the age of the main on Franklin Street, and the size are both similar to High Street, so it's very likely a similar situation.
And you, you just recently had a leak on, oh my gosh, I'm trying to remember the name of the street.
County Captain Curtis.
Captain Curtis, that's what I was thinking of, and there was a big issue over there, wasn't there, like, they didn't come out quite fast enough to start taking care of that?
Captain Curtis, again, it was another situation, it started surfacing initially at a manhole, couldn't determine the location of the leak there either, and it eventually surfaced on a Sunday morning, where we could determine exactly where it was, and it was excavated and repaired the next morning.
Any questions, concerns?
I do have questions.
Go ahead, Counselor Reynolds.
You're saying it was first reported on Sunday?
It was first reported later in the week, the week before. I think it was like a Thursday afternoon.
So when was it first reported? When was it first reported, the leak?
I believe it was a Thursday afternoon. It might have been the Wednesday.
It was Wednesday. Okay, and that leak remained leaking until it was repaired on the following Monday?
Yes.
Can you tell me how much water was running between Wednesday, when the leak was first reported, through till Monday? It was not shut off.
Right.
It was running. First of all, was that treated water?
It is treated water.
It was treated.
Mm-hmm.
So how many gallons of water or whatever the number is, what, what was lost there? Treated water?
That I actually don't have in front of me, I wasn't expecting to talk about Captain Curtis.
Well, I didn't expect you to be here either.
Right.
So, I'm coming up with the questions.
There actually was, excuse me, sorry, there was another delay actually on Captain Curtis. We originally went out to excavate that on a Friday.
It first found?
Well, it took them a while to actually find it surfacing, first of all, but we went to shut it off on a Friday, and what ended up happening was with that area of the system, to shut off that main, what we would end up with is basically from Captain Curtis out over the bridge to the Pawtucket Line, basically, it just leaves a stub of main with nothing feeding it.
So instead, we let that continuous amount of water leak into nothingness, treated water leaking into nothingness for like five days?
Right.
That was the other option?
There is a reason for it. We went out, again, we have a dead-end stub of main, nothing feeding it, so it's basically having your house shut off. To repair this required, well, first of all, notification, second of all, we were shutting down a city business with no fire protection that would have had to send home 63 employees unexpectedly.
So, I'm, again, I'm asking you, how much water?
I don't have that in front of me.
I need you to, I need to know that. I wanna know how much water we lost that was treated water?
Right.
And that we know that the reservoir is low at the time, we also know that O'S Pond was low, and so how, how did we manage to refill what we lost? Because it ran for five days, and it was gushing.
Right.
At least three feet high. So, okay, my other question was, who, who reported the leak? Can you tell me?
I don't know a lot of the time.
I'd like to know that also.
Okay.
So I will ask, excuse me, Counselor Reynolds, I will ask Superintendent Courtney Wanchell to get in touch with you?
Mm-hmm.
With any type of answers that you might need.
That'd be great.
Okay. Thank you. So are there any more questions with regards to the Franklin Street main or anything else? Thank you very much.
I do have one more question.
Oops, go ahead, please.
That doesn't relate to this, but I know that we are hearing that the TTHM numbers are down?
Yes.
Which is great news, and that we're in compliance, but I, I want to understand this, because I believe that the Wading River is feeding the areas that had those poor numbers, and didn't we just restart Wading River?
Yes, we did.
And when did that get restarted?
It actually got restarted after sampling.
So I'm trying to understand this process, if the Wading River got restarted after the sampling... and the numbers were high and Wading River is what was supposed to feed them to lower the numbers, how, how, how did that occur?
No, actually, we've seen a trend, again, over the last several years, lower production, higher rainfall. So higher water age in the system. And again, we've taken tanks out of service. We've cleaned tanks, we've flushed. We've changed tank level operations, operation of both plants. And all of those efforts over the last year have actually lowered the THMs. One of the efforts was slowing Wading River. And we, you know, we did so many things at once. My thought was, I wanted to see how much lower these numbers would be without Wading River running. So it was down for tank maintenance, it was down for a pump replacement anyway, so it remained out of service an extra couple of weeks for the testing to see what the effect of that plant would be on these levels. And again, it is, it is a contributor. Again, it takes more chlorine per gallon of water to treat the water at Wading River than it does at West Street. And again, this was one of the things that I came down and discussed last year. And that was one of the earlier reasons for slowing Wading River. And again, the results we received last week are lower, as I expected. I have already started talking to a consultant to look at pilot studies and different sources, different ways to treat the water at Wading River to be able to bring that chlorine demand down.
Thank you. That was a nice article, I'm going to say. I did read that today. And I, I did notice that in the article, you started the flushing program earlier in November to try and clean all those contend- contaminants out of there sooner, correct?
Yeah, we, we actually extended it into November. We usually start early fall anyway. We're usually done before Halloween and we went through the first week in November.
Mm-hmm, okay, great. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Mr. Blair?
Yeah.
Council Blair?
I've had some complaints lately of trenches not being repaired. In particular, Mulberry Street, I had a couple of residents calling. I was going to talk to Katie.
Okay, if you can, when you get them, if you can pass them to me, that would be great.
Seeing you there, I think if you say Mulberry Street, when you go back, resident evidently called and was told that you didn't have time to fix these trenches.
You and I should talk because I would like to know who they spoke to.
I don't know.
So it wasn't, okay.
You know how residents are, sometimes they don't want to tell you too much.
Right, right.
Okay, but I, I use Mulberry Street and it's going to be a hazard to the plow. There's, there's two trenches there that have been there quite some time. Jumps of roadway in the road.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments, Superintendent? Thank you very much for coming. I hope you have a happy, happy Thanksgiving to you and your staff.
Oh, thank you.
You too.
Thank you very much. So from the docket of December third, two thousand nineteen, I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor to appropriate eighty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars from account six-one-zero-zero-dash-three-five-nine-zero-zero-zero, Water Enterprise retained earnings to fund three-three-three-five Franklin Street Water Main to install a six, six-inch, six-foot, six-foot water main on Franklin Street. All those in favor? Thank you. Any comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. Thank you ever so kindly. Moving on to number four. So I have three requests here from the Recreation Department. Let me just get here. All my little notes after speaking to Mr. Walsh. From the docket of December third, two thousand nineteen, I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor to transfer thirty-five thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars from account one-one-two-four-one-zero-zero-zero-dash-five-seven-eight-three-eight-zero, Citywide Reserve Fund for Capital to account one-six-three-zero-one-zero-zero-zero-dash-five-eight-five-zero-four-six, Recreation mower to replace a two thousand five, seventy-two-inch mower at the Recreation Department.
Second.
Thank you. So we all know that Recreation mows lawns like twenty-four-seven, seven days, not seven days a week, six days a week, sometimes, you know, depending on what's going on in the season. But they've had these mowers for a very long time. He has two seventy-two inches and two one hundred and forty-four-inch wingspan mowers. He's had this on the capital improvements. It's dying out and so he needs to replace it. And I would like all of you to approve it. Thank you. That's what I'm saying. Any comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. Thank you ever so kindly. From the docket of December third, two thousand nineteen, I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor to transfer twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars and five cents from account one-one-two-four-one-zero-zero-zero-dash-five-seven-eight-three-zero-eight-zero, Citywide Reserve Fund for Capital to account one-six-three-zero-one-zero-zero-zero-dash-five-eight-seven-zero-six-five, Recreation Purchase of Vehicle to replace the Recreation Department two thousand three Ford Ranger. Thank you. So. Their Ford, the Ford Ranger that they have now is been with that department for seventeen years. It's, it's time for it to be replaced. The mileage is very high. And they're looking to put, replace it with an F-150. Now, sitting down, when he sat down with the mayor, and I'm assuming he sat down with Barry too, I can't remember what Mr. Walsh did tell me. So he's asking for a F-150 instead of, like, they had suggested a 350 or maybe a 250, a little bit bigger. But he said, no, I just need something smaller because what they do is they go around to all the parks and they pick up all the trash and all the barrels and they go in the, and they go in the back of the truck. So you've got to think of the safety of the, the gentleman or the woman, that, the personnel, that's picking up all those barrels, got to empty out all that trash. So he said, no, and he just can't cease asking for another twenty-two thousand dollars for a bigger truck, just because. So. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Thank you. Motion carries. From the docket of December third, two thousand nineteen, I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor to transfer thirty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars from account one-one-two-four-one-zero-zero-zero-dash-five-seven-eight-three-eight-zero, Citywide Reserve Fund for Capital to account one-six-three-zero-one-zero-zero-zero-dash-five-eight-four-zero-two-nine, Recreation Outdoor Facility Improvements to do repairs and maintenance on walks and parking lot at Ponson Hewitt Recreational Facility. Thank you. First of all, I can't believe that Ponson Hewitt is seventeen years old. Because we sat on the council when, like, we went through all the arguments, back and forth, where, where it was going to be put. It was supposed to be put at Locus Valley years ago and then we had a group come in that said, no, 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 no. Mayor Robbins and, like, seventeen years, it just blows my mind. I mean, it is beautiful because we get compliments. I'm sure all of us do repeatedly how our parks, our recreation fields, they're just absolutely gorgeous. So Recreation, the Director of Recreation, Dennis Walsh, has said, Kate, right now, I think what I need to do is do preventative maintenance and that's what this is for. He said, because a lot of people use it for walking, there are tons of children out there, lots of families, and you're starting to see the parking lot deteriorate. He said, he wants to stay on top of it. So he's, and which I really appreciate because I think it's better. We, we save a lot of money if you take care of the things that we have, instead of waiting till they've gone to, like, capits. So I'm all in favor of this. Any questions or comments? No? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. Thank you ever so kindly. Let me just find my number seven. Oh, yes. I entertain, oh, from the docket of December third, two thousand nineteen, I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor to transfer eight thousand, five hundred dollars from account six-zero-zero-zero-dash-five-seven-eight-three-zero-zero, Waste Water Enterprise Fund Reserve Fund for Transfer to account six-zero-zero-zero, excuse me, dash-five-two-four-zero-one-seven, Waste Water Enterprise Fund, repair heavy equipment to repair the tracks on a bulldozer for the Waste Water Department.
Second.
Thank you ever so kindly. I just have to find all my backup because you know how everything's behind? So this came in, first of all, I just want to acknowledge one thing. In the newspaper again today, I am so happy, like, I can't remember ever, going way back. I can't remember when the last time it is that the city of Attleboro actually won a case, a legality case. So we won the challenge of the sludge of landfill. And I'm so happy to see that, that we finally won a case, because I really can't remember the last time we did. So I was very happy to hear that on behalf of Waste Water, that we did, we did really well. So this is to repair, to replace all the tracks on one of their big, huge, heavy trucks that actually works on the landfill that goes in and goes up the steep hills, and they're going to replace all the tracks on the wheels and get the components all working because it's failing. We have a lot of equipment that's failing in the city of Attleboro in the last few months, huh? Any comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Posed? Thank you ever so kindly. And the last item of business, I entertain a motion to strike from the docket, from the docket of August fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, that Riverfront Drive be renamed Judy's Way.
Second.
Thank you. I did, this was brought in in July of two thousand seventeen by your Honorable Counselor Richard Conti. And in speaking with former Mayor Dumas, who was the mayor at the time and had worked very closely with former Mayor Judy Robbins, God rest her soul, he, when I spoke to him about this, he had said, you know, Kate, the family and I, we sat down with Judy and, you know, she said she never wanted a street named after her, so that's why we have Riverfront. The park is named after her and it's all about her. She never wanted a street. So, and I did speak with Counselor Conti with regards to this, and I do have his blessing from striking this from the docket. Thank you ever so much. Any comments or questions? Please. President Cooper?
Thank you, Counsel Jackson. So she may not have wanted it, but it already exists, right? So there is a Robbins Street in Attleboro that goes through the hospital parking lot, right?
Oh, that's right.
So she may not have wanted it, but it, I think that it, it's already there. And it was there when, when she was the mayor. So I, I appreciate where this came from. It came from the presentation of, from the Attleboro Redevelopment Authority Chair, and Rick was at the, at that. And he, he initially, I think, suggested that in his comments when they opened the, the road. And I think, based on the discussion with former Mayor Dumas and that he had that discussion with them and, and they decided what, what, what they felt was the right thing to do. And Counselor Conti, being in support, I, I, I think it's the right thing to do to strike it, but not because it's the right thing to do based on what they wanted. And it already exists if we really wanted to name a street after.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you for those comments and thank you, Mr. Conti, very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. Thank you. I have no further business this evening for the Public Works Committee. But before I adjourn, I want to wish you all a very happy, excuse me, one minute.
Before you get to Happy Thanksgiving, did you vote the seven hundred and thirty-four thousand?
Yeah.
Well, you did. I missed that one. How did I, how did that happen?
Yes, I brought that one up first.
Okay.
Phew. Thank you.
Thank you.
So now I'll go back. I wish you all a very happy and a blessed Thanksgiving. Enjoy your families, your time. You know, all whoever's cooking, I know Mr. Conti always cooks in his kitchen. And don't forget to help clean up after the dishes are done, okay? With that, I'd like to ask for an adjournment with the Public Works Committee.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned at seven forty.
Council Waterman, Council Waterman, I'm actually, can I please go? Because I was going to have two people speak. Do you mind?
Yes, sure.
Thank you.
You may go ahead.
Thank you. Ordinance election legislative meeting is ordered at seven forty. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Tyler and Courtney Wanchell are already here, so I thought that they could speak about an ordinance that came before us last week. I'm not bringing anything out of committee tonight, but I figured we could take advantage of the fact that they're here and they could tell us a little bit about what they're hoping, why they're hoping to get this passed.
So, you know what? It's an ordinance change, requires a public hearing. We haven't had it yet.
Got to have that for, got to have the, got to open the pub, call for and have the public hearing, which we should do.
We do have a public hearing scheduled by the beginning.
And that's for twelve-three, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so.
Is it the committee meeting now? Would it be okay with you?
No, because we haven't opened the public hearing yet.
So I will reach out then for when the committee meeting is happening.
Sorry about that. That's my bad, Mike. I, Counselor Holmes did ask me about it. Council Reynolds and Holmes asked about it since they were both here. Had to have that discussion and it slipped my brain that, that public hearing wasn't until the third.
Okay, so we will see you.
Sorry about that. Sorry you had to stay a few minutes longer than you would have, but.
Well, now that I already opened the meeting, I do have a few updates that I wanted to provide to everyone. So in the month of December, I will be bringing out the vacant buildings ordinance. It's a very long one, so I would encourage everyone to, to read it over. As I, I probably won't read the whole thing when it does come time, so if you have any questions about that, certainly feel free to reach out prior. The other, the other thing I wanted to discuss was the rent control. I've been continuing to get a lot of calls about this and I want to kind of set the expectations. Some people are thinking that in the month of December, that this body is going to set a rent control. This is very far off from what, what is even before us right now. So in the month of December, I'm hoping to hear back from the city solicitor. She would be letting us know, other communities do have a rent control board. She's letting us know what the process would look like if we decided to take that process. And then at that point, we can decide if there's going to be a resolution potentially created that would have to pass. Then it would go to the state, then the state would send it back to the administration and the administration would set this up. And some of the individuals that I've spoken to, like I said, expect in the next two weeks for us to set a rent control. I think that they're not understanding that there's, there's quite a process, so I, I just did want to let everybody know that. There's nothing being held up, but it's not, there is a process. And I've, I've actually had a lot of people reach out and have a lot of information on both sides. So, so that will be something coming up probably in the early new year to just, for all of us to review what the city solicitor says. Are there any questions or comments about that? Right now, okay.
Not at this time, I don't.
Okay, okay. And, and I know, like, other communities are starting to talk about it as well and that's some of the calls that I was getting is that, oh, this community is doing it, but then when I tried to look into details, it is a process and there's nothing, there's no quick fix. It's not ten business days and it's going to be done, so I just wanted to kind of set that expectation. We are trying to move it along as quickly as possible, but it is a process. The, that is pretty much it for, and then we will have the public hearing next week and, and hear from Mr. Tyler and Mrs. Wanchell. And I will call to adjourn.
Before you do that.
Oops, I'll take it back.
So I just want to make some additional comments on vacant buildings and the dog ordinance, if I could. So both will remind all of, all of you that they were both reviewed by the city solicitor. So if there are any comments, please, through Virginia, or questions, please, through Virginia to Counsel Holmes. And then same thing with the dog thing that was also reviewed. My memory serves me right by the solicitor to form, and if there's any questions about either, please reach out through Virginia to, to Counsel Holmes for us to be ready to get these off of the docket for the month of December.
So, Counsel Holmes, will these be, will both of these ordinances be coming up next week?
Yes, so vacant, vacant buildings and then also there is one that's in the, a dog park one, which we had a public hearing, I believe it was in July. And I can go over more details when I bring it out as well.
Okay.
And provide that.
Thank you.
No problem. Um, and then also just to provide another update, where I'm still waiting to hear from the city solicitor on the, abouters of the three hundred feet of the pole. There was something from Counselor Conti about that.
Yeah.
Um, so we're waiting for, for the city solicitor to also get some information on that. So I will call for an adjournment.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned at seven forty-six. Thank you for letting me go, Counselor Waterman.
I will call Personnel and Human Services Committee to order at seven forty-six. And from the docket of December third, two thousand nineteen, uh, I'll call your attention to, uh, the fact that there has been a communication from John W. Parsons, Esquire of the Mass Public Employee Retirement Administration Commission, uh, which has a shorter name, P-RAC, which is a name I'm just learning, uh, regarding the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one required appropriation. I attended the, briefly attended, the meeting of the, uh, the Retirement, uh, Commission this week and Retirement Board. And I was informed that this does not require a vote. It's merely informative. That, uh, the commission will be, uh, this was written by John Parsons, and it said, just one paragraph, "This commission is hereby furnishing you with the amount to be appropriated for your retirement system for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one." Uh, and it's in the, uh, which commences July one, two thousand twenty. The appropriation is for eight million, three hundred fifty-two thousand, four hundred forty-one dollars. And to my knowledge, we do not need to take up a vote on this. It's informative. I would ask Counselor Delizio, is that your understanding?
Yep.
It's, it, that it goes into the budget?
Yeah, I mean, we, this is annual. We do this at P-RAC every year. I mean, this is.
Right. It's my first time.
Yep.
So with that in mind, uh, is there any questions on that issue? Saying none, uh, we do not need a vote. I would also like to, uh, strike from the docket of April third, two thousand eighteen. I would like to make a motion to strike the following. And, uh, this was new business, which was introduced by Counselor Conti on March twentieth, two thousand eighteen. And it's been, we, we haven't done anything with this. And it reads that in accord with the City of Attleboro, Massachusetts, City Charter Article Three, Section three dash one, which reads, "The mayor shall receive for his services such salary as the municipal council shall by ordinance determine within the first eighteen months of the term of office and is to be effective at the start of the next term of office, that effective January one, two thousand twenty." "The salary of the City of Attleboro mayor be set at one hundred thousand dollars per year." And in addition, that the position of mayor shall be removed from the City of Attleboro Classification Plan as defined in the revised ordinances for the City of Attleboro, Chapter thirteen, Personnel, Section five dash one, um, dot one, Mayor, amended one-five-eleven, which is to be deleted. In accord with City Charter Article Two, Section seven B, this measure will call for a public hearing, and a majority of the municipal councils should be required to adopt said ordinance revision. I am moving to strike this from the docket. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a second?
Few seconds.
Um, I thought I heard Counselor.
I said second.
Yes.
The second did.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is there any discussion on this item? And I would also invite Counselor Conti to discuss if you would like as well. Counselor Conti.
So what's the rationale for striking it?
Well, for one thing, it's out of date. Cannot apply for, uh, because it's gone past eighteen months. We're in our twenty-third month of the term.
Good reason.
Oh, I love you, Richard.
Thank you very much. Is there any other question or comment that anyone would like to add? I shall ask for a vote on this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? It passes three to nothing. It is now struck. And that concludes the, uh, business of the Personnel and Human Services Committee. I will call for an adjournment. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. We will call for the second, next committee meeting at the next appropriate time. Thank you.
The Capitol Improvements and City Development Committee meeting is canceled tonight. The Transportation and Traffic Committee meeting is canceled tonight. The Special Committee on Council's Rules and Procedures is canceled tonight.
Excellent. Uh, so I'll call the Zoning and Land Use Committee to order at seven fifty-one. And the committee is myself, Counselor Holmes, Counselor Delizio. We have one order business tonight from the docket of December third, two thousand nineteen. I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor to transfer two thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars and twelve cents from account two-five-one-three-five-three-zero-one-four-seven SPC REC to account two-five-one-three-five-five-zero-zero-one-six kiosk to allow Conservation Commission to contract with the Audubon Society for a junior conservation program at Brennan Middle School.
Second.
All right. This one, this one confused me a little bit. Um, and there's, there's a couple of things that are in play here. The, that kiosk account has twenty-five hundred dollars in it. This is, and it was seeded with ten thousand dollars, uh, based on some, some legal proceedings, um, in a, in a vote that happened back in two thousand sixteen. Um, they've run two of these Conservation Commission, uh, Junior Conservation Commission, uh, programs. And from the, the ten thousand that was in the account, the remaining amount that's left is two thousand five hundred eighty-six dollars. So, one of the, there were three options that Gary presented to the Conservation Commission for how they would like to, to pay for this, uh, if, for the upcoming year. And one of the options was to transfer the money from the SPC REC account, which we had, there was, there was some extra money in there. They've already s- spent, um, some syruphead money there. It's a, there's extra money remaining there, so they're taking the remaining money from that, um, SPC REC account, transferring it over to the kiosk account, so that they can fund this junior, uh, Conservation Commission program at Brennan Middle School. Um, so there's, there's, there's a few moving parts there, but, uh, it made sense to me. If, if you have questions, I'm happy to try to answer them. But, uh, fully support it. Anything else? Too easy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And that concludes the business for the Zoning and Land Use Committee. Move to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned at seven fifty-four.
So I want to call Budget and Appropriations to order at seven fifty-four. I have no business. However, I do just want to mention a couple of things. Um, one, there's several pieces of business that have been sitting in this, um, committee for several years that, uh, two weeks from now, I'm gonna clear out. I wanted to let people know that I'm gonna clear it out, give you a couple of weeks to go over, review if there's any question. We can then entertain the conversation then, so we're not just springing, kinda, I wanna strike this. Um, secondly, we are gonna have a Budget and Appropriations meeting on December twelfth at five-thirty with Deb and, uh, Deb Gould and Laura Gignac, just to discuss some of the bonding issues that we're coming up against. Um, and.
Five-thirty, you said? Okay.
Uh, also want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, um, especially our first responders and servicemen and women who won't be able to be with their family, um, on Thanksgiving as they'll be working. And that being said, I would like to call for an adjournment at seven fifty-five.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, you are adjourned.
I'd like to call Licenses Committee to order at seven fifty-five. I have a few items this evening. From the docket of December third, two thousand nineteen, I move to approve the, uh, application for a Class One license from Courtesy Auto Group, Inc., DBA Courtesy Kia Mitsubishi at eleven and sixteen Scott Street with thirty-four customer parking spaces and one hundred and seventy-two display spaces.
Second.
Does anybody have any questions? All those.
One.
Oh, I'm sorry.
They haven't changed their name yet on the license? They don't advertise as Courtesy anymore.
Courtesy?
Kia?
Kia.
Mitsubishi?
Oh, Mitsubishi, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's the, that's the one that's.
I know where that is, yeah. I, I could've sworn you said Kia.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. From the docket of December third, two thousand nineteen, I move to approve the application for an amended Class Two Auto License for Lime Rock Motors LLC of seventy-two Washington Street with four customer spaces and forty-eight display space. Oh, no, disregard, excuse me. Sorry about that. We have a public hearing on that on twelve-three, disregard.
And the next one as well.
Yep. Uh, from the docket of November nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, I entertain a motion to approve the following twenty-twenty Class One Auto License Renewals. National Van Builders, Inc., seventy-eighty-four Pine Street, Seven Parker Street, Attleboro, Mass, for eight customer parking spaces and forty-five display spaces. Priority Automotive LLC, DBA Serone Chevrolet Buick GMC Trucks, one oh-three Washington Street, Attleboro, for eighty-five customer parking spaces and two hundred and eighty-eight display spaces. Courtesy Auto Group, uh, DBA Courtesy Kia Mitsubishi and eleven, at eleven and sixteen Scott Street with thirty-four customer parking spaces and one hundred and seventy-two display spaces.
Second.
Does anybody have any questions?
No.
I do. Were these three ones that you couldn't get to?
Um, yes.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Uh-uh.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. From the docket of November nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, I entertain a motion to approve the following applications for a twenty-twenty Class Two Auto License Renewals. County Auto Sales and Service, forty-two County Street, for ten customer parking spaces. Oh, it's cut off. Doesn't, does anybody have any?
Forty-two County Street, Attleboro, Mass, for ten customer parking.
And it's cut off with a.
Okay.
Nope.
Does it?
Yeah, just grab it quickly, look it up, just so you can write it in. It's not on here either.
Sorry, everybody. Do I have the, I don't think I have the.
It's not on here.
I don't think it's on the docket. It's not on the docket. Sorry, can you get by?
Yeah, the bottom of the paper got cut off.
Yeah. I got it right here. I got it. Now I lost my control portions. So I'm gonna withdraw my second. I'm sorry?
I'm gonna withdraw. No, I didn't do a second.
No, I got it.
Okay.
Okay. So it's for ten customer parking spaces and twenty-eight display spaces.
Second. No, I can't do a second. You're still part of the, the next group.
I'm still going on the next page. David Montenegro, DBA Old School Auto Sales, one eighty-seven Cumberland Ave, Attleboro, for four customer parking spaces and twenty-nine display spaces. Dashon Motor Group, mo- Motor Group, okay, let me try this again. Dashon Motor Company, Inc., nine fifty-seven Washington Street, Attleboro, for twelve customer parking spaces and fifty-five display spaces.
Excuse me, Counselor Dolan, um, on my paper, I still have, like, above David Mon-
Yeah.
It says green light. Are we skipping that one?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. So I'm gonna say second.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All those in favor?
Aye. Oops, 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 Counsel.
What? Does anybody have any questions? I'm sorry.
President Cooper does.
I do. So, um, County Auto Sales, uh, can you tell me whether or not, how many times you had to go there and were they in compliance when you arrived the first time?
Um, just twice. And they were a smidge out the first time I went there.
Okay, thank you.
A ton, but, oh.
And then, uh, David Montenegro?
Yep.
Was he in compliance the first time you went there? And if not, how many times did you have to go?
He was not, and I went back an additional, which was this past Saturday. I went back and he was in compliance.
Okay. And Vashon was because you weren't able to get there?
That's correct.
That's right, okay. So when you do these votes, would you please put a note on your minutes to separate these out?
Sure.
Because I will not support, and anybody else, you can do what you want. But if you can't count cars and you own a business, then I don't think you should be in business. And I'm sending a message as the president of this council that we should not be doing this. Counselor Dolan goes way over and above, because she's much nicer than I am. So, that said, I'm saying no, and I'm saying a message. I'm not asking any of you to do the same. I'm simply sending a message that says, cut it out. Count the cars and follow your license. And if you don't, ask us if you can expand and do the right thing. It's just too, it's, we, we've been for years wishy-washy, and I get it. But we're counting cars, we're checking licenses, and we're doing the right thing. So please conform. But anybody that you've had to go back to, and these names are names that Counselor Dolan has called me repeatedly on, um, trying to get their attention, and she should not have to do that. And it's not about we're not business friendly. It's about follow the license you have. We wouldn't do this with anybody else. Why do we allow this? So, that being said, I will not support any that you've had to do multiple visits for, that I've received multiple calls on. I appreciate your calls, and I, I think we come up with a strategy to get them compliant. So you should all, um, do what you think's right based on the committee chair. But I'm, I don't want you, anybody to be surprised next week when I say no to two licenses. That concludes my comments. Thank you.
So, um, just, just to be clear, I mean, you know, i- when I go out there, you know, just to clarify for my committee and anybody else, if there, if there are a couple over, I, I, I don't typically make a big deal about it because they are often, you know, they'll have a section where they're already sold and they're being picked up in three days or whatever the case is. And I'm not saying that, you know, everybody's completely honest with me. Um, you know, i- it's the people that are substantially out of compliance are the ones that, and, and I try to work with them. Sometimes, you know, I have customers that, I mean, I have, um, car dealerships that have fifteen parking, customer parking and fifteen display. I'm like, well, just make twenty display and five, you know, because they just don't, they, they, they have the room or if they can expand or whatever the case is. So we do try to work with them, because a lot of times, people seeing me for the first time, you know, they, they just don't know who I am or why I'm there. And so anyway, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Um, I, I, and I appreciate the, the accommodation aspect of it. But I agree with President Cooper, because a lot of these names we've heard before for years, this isn't the first time. Where I disagree is the business friendly piece, because this is about being business friendly to the majority of these dealerships that are in compliance, that don't give us a hard time. And I think that that's really where we need to look at. And some of these that we've heard time and time, year in, year out, and, you know, if it's one, I get it, it happens. But I don't think that the problem here is these, uh, businesses that have one or two cars over. It's the, you know, five to ten or more cars that we've knocked on their door, whether it was you or Counselor Conti or Perica or Counselor Cooper when he, President Cooper when he had it. You know, I think that a lot of these, um, businesses, they come up year in and year out. So I, I do agree with, um, President Cooper, and we'll be doing the same.
Anybody else have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. That's all the business I have. So I'd like to call for an adjournment at eight oh-five.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Reporting for City Property and Claims Committee at eight oh-four, I'd like to call it to order, eight oh-five, I'm sorry. From the docket of December third, two thousand nineteen, I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor to transfer three thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars and sixty cents from account one-one-two-four-one-zero-zero-zero-dash-five-seven-eight-three-hundred. from account one-one-two-four-one-zero-zero-zero-dash-five-seven-eight-three-hundred. Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer to Account one-one-four-six-one-zero-zero-zero-dash-five-three-zero-eight-two-zero. Collector Recordings to fund one hundred and twenty-five tax documents at the Registry of Deeds.
Second.
Thank you. I think it's pretty self-explanatory. Any questions, concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That motion passes. And then, from the docket of December third, twenty nineteen, I entertain a motion to transfer nineteen thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars from account one-one-two-four-one-zero-zero-zero-dash-five-seven-eight-three-hundred. Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer to Account one-four-two-zero-one-zero-zero-dash-five-three-zero-one-zero-one. Public Works Professional Services to install an ornamental streetlight on the corner of Pleasant and Emery.
Second.
Thank you.
Nope, we can't do that one. There's a public hearing on that.
Whoa.
This is the one you told me to read.
That's no public hearing in place to replace a streetlight.
Um, no, this is the one that was in, in your committee. Inadvertently got assigned to yours.
Yes. Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so did I get a second?
Sorry, I apologize.
No problem. Um, okay, second, uh, so any questions, concerns?
What was your repeat that amount?
Nineteen thousand eight hundred and sixty.
Wow. What happened to the?
I mean, it did seem pretty high. Do you want me to check into it? I can hold it.
Yeah, I am, I'm assuming that. Mike, is that?
Is that reasonable?
Is that the normal replace a streetlight, nineteen thousand dollars?
It's to install. To install an ornament.
In my presentation to the mayor about this funding request, there was much more detailed information on that. I think it's important to share with the council so they, they can make an informed vote on this. This was a twenty-three foot tall light pole on the corner of Emery and Pleasant that was a hit and run. I don't, I don't realize how that can happen, how it can hit a twenty-three foot light pole and have it fall, and nobody knows. Um, but that being said, it's more than aesthetic. It's because that particular light pole is the one with the photo cell that runs the whole string of lights that goes, uh, basically down Gilbert Perry. So when it's not on a photo cell, it's on a backup, but they have clocks inside them that have to be manually set. And that's when the problems start occurring. So now, when you have daylight saving signs and the days get shorter, a lot of people complaining that lights are on, they're not supposed to be, or they're, they're shut off and they're supposed to be on. It's creating a safety hazard. Um, I'm not sure why it wasn't funded three years ago and originally happened. Um, again, I, I mean, it sounds very odd to have this happen, but it basically took the whole pole down. So the only thing that's there at this time is the cement foundation.
So it is that expensive, but that's on account of the photo cell and the stuff that's on that light that isn't on every other light in town?
That photo cell, this runs that whole line of lights on that side of Pleasant Street.
Okay, so that is, that is.
It does create a safety problem when.
I'm not questioning that. I was just sort of shocked at nineteen thousand dollars for a light pole.
It was a very surprising number when, uh, I seen the quotes for it. But they are very, I mean, they're a decorative light. They got the, the shepherd's hook on them, um.
All the bells and whistles.
Okay.
Very expensive, yes.
I'm glad you were here to verify the price.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Yes.
Okay, so, um, any other concerns?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, um, I'm just gonna say ahead of time that I'm not, I, I, I'm gonna say no to this coming out of committee. Um, but I'm gonna read it and then I'll, I'll give me reasons why. From the docket of the tenth seventeenth, twenty nineteen, I entertain a motion to approve the request from the school department to declare surplus and available for disposition of the following items. bins, weights, speaker clocks, kickboard, power towers, lane lines, lane line rails, flags and flag poles, starting block lights, two aluminum ladders, and lettering that spell out William Dench, uh, and Auditorium.
Second.
Thank you. Um, so the reason I'm voting no is because I've had discussions, um, with the school on this. And this whole, um, motion needs adjustments. There's things in here that are definitely not even, haven't been removed. They're not even available for, uh, disposition or surplus or anything yet. So, um, it needs to go back, uh, back to the school. They need to turn it back in. So, um, I'm voting no on this. So, um, that's my reasons why. All, all those in favor?
I have a comment.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, so I think that the lettering is still on the wall, like.
They haven't even figured out how to take it down.
Okay.
So that's.
So, but then some of the stuff, like the lane lines and the flags may be available. So we're just hoping that the administration can rework this and it.
Well, I think it has to go back to the school. They have to send a new one in and we start over again. Okay. Um, so all those in favor?
No.
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 Nice question, please.
I'm sorry, Kate.
That's quite all right. Um, so why aren't we just holding it in committee until they figure out what's going on?
Well, they did figure out what's going on and they can't, so I mean, unless I just take out the things that aren't available. But I feel more comfortable sending it back up to the mayor. It goes back to the school and they, they, they resubmit what is available for, because some of these things are not available for surplus. And the school would like to rewrite it.
So just, but if, if you still held on to it, you still have possession of it? So until they figure out how to get rid of it, because they know you're not letting it go until they take care of it the way you want it to happen.
I, I feel pretty comfortable they're gonna, I, I want to send it back up to the mayor, and I want it to go back to the school and they send in a new one. The way that it should be written.
So are we gonna send it back to the mayor? Like, are we gonna? Okay, Councilor.
Thank you, Mark.
Yeah, so I think with the, um, with the vote, right, and your stated reason. I think that there's, there's an opportunity that's been expressed by the school committee. And they wanna take an up, take the opportunity to perhaps dispose of this in a different way than they initially thought they wanted to.
Okay.
So.
Thank you, that's clear.
Yeah, so, um, I did, um, geez, months ago, uh, talked to the mayor about it. And, and, uh, to some school committee members who wanted to rethink their initial thoughts on what they were disposing and what they were ready to get rid of at the time. So that's the, that was the, the plan behind, um, just not doing it, not bringing it before the full council. There's no point, there's no point in keeping it. They know they have to come before us to dispose of this, even if they wanted to give, uh, these things back to the, to the family.
Okay, thank you.
They will do that. They have committed to that.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, we, we voted on that. We just like.
Yeah, I, I would vote it again because.
Okay.
I interrupted.
Any comments, concerns, questions? Okay, all those in favor? No?
No.
Thank you. Okay, same with this one. Um, I think that some additional information has become available. And I had a discussion, um, with, um, President Cooper. And we, um, with what's coming out and some of the other options that are available to us, we'd like to send this back to the mayor. And, um, get it to come back down for an additional public hearing. So, from the docket of May twenty-first, twenty nineteen, I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor to surplus the old Richardson School Building at ninety-five Pine Street and make it available for disposition pursuant to chapter two dash eleven dash point two, disposition of real property, including a public hearing. The assessed value of this building is one million six hundred and ninety-six thousand nine hundred dollars. Public hear, uh, forget that.
Second.
Okay, so, um, all those in favor?
No.
No. Any other concerns, questions, blah, blah? Sorry, Mark.
So, um, I do have some comments. This one, I think, should, should be voted out of the committee and come before the full council. I don't think the committee should decide for the council the, the fate or not of Richardson School. Also, there's been a lot of, um, other potential, um, solutions to, that have been presented through different means, whether it was social media, the newspaper, here at the podium. So I think, um, sending it back, say, right now, when, uh, at least from my perspective, you know, we, we vote whether we want to declare it just, uh, available for disposition as a council. And if we want to, then we say yes. If we don't want to, and we wanna go back to the drawing board to look at, uh, other potential options, um, for that building and lay those options out, then I think that's, that's what we do. But I, and we would say no, and this would go back to the mayor. The way it's, was presented to us in the public hearing didn't present all the, all the potential options, I didn't think. And there's some things that have come up since, which, um, we have gotten updates all along. So, um, I think there's an opportunity for us to preserve this and do think the way that we manage that building differently. We've all sort of said, um, that in different ways, or people, uh, councils have relayed that to me. So when it comes before the full council, um, you know, we have, we, we, we all will make that decision collectively and can, you know, make comments at that time. But it doesn't make sense to leave it here in committee under the previous, uh, public hearing that we had, which didn't include other potential options. None of that was discussed publicly. And, and, um, if you wanna make the comments about how you're talking to Gary and some opportunities for, um, Gary to, to come back before us and then, and him to invite some guests.
So the reason I, so I just, I didn't see why it should come out because it's gonna be, what I would like to see is a whole new public hearing. Because there have, have been so, some other options. Uh, excuse me, go ahead, Councilor Conti.
No fish.
Oh, um, I would like to have another public hearing because there are some people that I'd like to bring forward that have offered other options that would make it available to the city at a reasonable cost. And, um, ways for them to earn the money and stay there. Um, and also some, um, uh, nonprofits have talked of some interest. So I don't think that we can do it under this because we closed the public hearing and then all of a sudden people started coming out of the, um, woodwork. And it wasn't something that we could address right now. So I had not wanted to bring it out because I didn't wanna take the chance of it somehow getting passed when all these other options are available. So I wanted to, what?
Don't bring it out.
Well, I, I'm, I'm asking Councilor Cooper if I have to bring it out because my point is it will have to come back down again, correct, Councilor Cooper?
It'll come back.
Yeah, it'll come back down.
It'll come back down, so, uh, Councilor Conti.
So I have a different point of view than President Cooper. And my point of view is that you're the chairman of the committee. If you don't like what's in front of your committee and your committee doesn't like it in front of your committee, by not bringing it from the council, you take control of the matter and you handle the matter in your committee. You, otherwise, what's the value of a committee? If everything is gonna flow through the committee to the council, but the council decide, what's the value of a committee? So, so my opinion is different than Councilor Cooper's in that if you, as chairman and your committee members, don't like this motion, don't send it out of committee. A different motion will come down and then you get your opportunity for another public hearing.
That is what I would like to do, um, Councilor Cooper, unless by the rules, I can't do it.
So you can do whatever you wanna do in your committee. And when you asked me what I thought, I told you what I thought. And we, not, not everything just flowed, flows before, through the committee. Because a motion prior, we killed it in committee, right? So, um, a lot of things, most things do. Um, and in this case, uh, given, I, I, my, my rationale for that, um, was to give everyone, um, an opportunity to vote on what they thought should happen with the Richardson School. And why let the three in the committee decide that? If the committee chair wants to, uh, you know, not vote it out of committee, that's fine too. The outcome's the same.
Yeah.
The outcome's the same. The optics aren't, but the outcome is.
Well, so my feeling is, is the, uh, optics isn't the same. But, um, my feeling is, is that we need to start it fresh. And so I, I'd prefer not to bring it out of committee. I really would prefer to do that. Um, because I think there are a lot of new options on the table and, and we'll just start with the new public hearing and that would be. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just have one follow-up comment. There will be no formal communication to the mayor about the outcome through a certificate of vote either, which I also feel is important in this case, but, and that concludes my comments.
Thank you. So you can call for another public hearing with regards to the Richardson School?
Only if the mayor sends it back down.
He sends it back down.
So we have to send it back up to him no matter what?
Well, he's gonna find out.
Well, if we turn this down, if we turn, if we, if we don't take it out of committee, he, he, we still own the building and we, and it, somehow it has to come back down here sooner or later if he wanted to sell it again. Do you know what I'm saying? But it would come down and we would have an option to have another public hearing.
But don't we really wanna hear, like, I wanna hear what everybody's talking about, like, all these other options? Because I have no idea what's going on. Because I'm like excited when you told me that.
But we can't do it without another public hearing.
Okay.
And we can only get another public hearing if the mayor sends it back down.
Okay, so I'm not on the committee, but just as a person of this honorable body, I would like it to go back to the mayor. I would like another public hearing. I'd like to know what else is out there for us. Because before I tell you that I'm ready to sell that building, even though my heart's bleeding for all the people over there, if there's another option, my heart won't bleed so bad. And let's just find out what's going on, because I don't know everything that you are all talking about.
Well, I, that's why I don't want it to come out of committee. I want it to go back upstairs.
He'll, he'll know.
I, I know what you're saying. I do. Go ahead.
So I, I, another option for the committee to consider is a vote to refer it back to the administration.
So let's do that. There you go. Okay.
So I think that this needs to be reworked. I mean, assessed value of this building is one point six million or a dollar. I mean, this is, this needs to be handled appropriately. This was not handled appropriately and we do need to, um.
We can't do it dollars, but that's.
No, but that's, that was in the paper. But that was what was in the paper. And so I, that's what my point is that it's this or it could be this. I'm not comfortable selling this building. I would never advocate for that. So I would either say no in committee. That, that's gonna be my solid vote. This is, there's too many, um, valuable resources here. That concludes my comments. Thank you.
There's definitely other uses for that, Sarah. Um, the recreation department's tight for space. So on that alone, in the fire department, you know, uh, we're talking about a new public safety building somewhere. I, I, personally, I think there's a lot of questions to answer not to get rid of it. So if there are some options, I'd like to see it come back down. As, uh, Councilor Jackson said, and let's look at the other options. I think another public hearing is really necessary.
I agree.
So I think President Cooper's.
Refer it to.
Re- refer back to the mayor.
So if we.
I think that's maybe the polite thing to do.
That's a politer way to do it. So we refer it back to the mayor.
The committee would vote, would, you would make a motion to amend, your s- motion to strike, to a motion to refer back to the mayor. And then this.
For further study.
And, and it would also, um, be a formal communication back to the mayor as to what the committee, um, the reason, right? I mean, he's, he's probably hearing it now.
I'm sure he's paying attention to it.
But nevertheless, uh, I think that's a.
So I, so I'm just gonna make the motion to, um, to amend, to refer it back to the mayor, um, for additional consideration and a rethought process to resend it down so that we can have a, a, another public hearing on that.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, and aye.
Perfect.
Okay. Okay, and then I just want to make a motion to strike from the docket of March ninth, twenty nineteen. Allow passive recreation non-property formerly known as Highland Country Club.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And that motion passes. Okay, so I think, I think I have them all. I just have, before I close out my committee. I'm sorry, I have to use this because, um, I, I have some constituents in South Attleboro that asked if I would please announce this to the council. And I did mention to Councilor Cooper about, um, this. And we are gonna bring these, um, young people in, um, after the holidays. But I just wanted to, I'm sorry. But I just wanted to, I'm sorry. Some of you might have seen this already, I did post it on my Facebook site. What did I do with it, where is it, here? Oh, I just had it. Hang on guys, bear with me. Here it is, okay. So I'm just gonna read this, they sent me a letter and wanted me to read this out to the council. The twelve and under Attleboro White Hawks cheerleaders won first place out of ten teams this last weekend at the AYC New England Regional Cheer Competition. A lot of the girls are from South, quite a few of them are from South Attleboro. This gives them a bid to Nationals in Florida to compete for a national title. The team consists of twenty-four girls that range from ages nine to twelve. They wanted you to know that they have a GoFundMe page and they would appreciate any, any support that you might be willing to offer them. The, the GoFundMe page is on Facebook and we are gonna bring them in here after the first of the year just because of their first win and it would be marvelous if they won the second time as well at the Nationals. So, good luck to the White Hawk cheerleaders, twelve and under. Thank you. And that is all the City Property and Claims Committee has for business this evening and I would like to adjourn, adjournment for eight twenty-seven. Thank you, and we are adjourned at eight twenty-seven.
I'm calling Special Committee for Tax Abatement Review here at eight twenty-seven. I, the public hearing closed, which I thought it was very helpful to hear from Madeline from the team. This is starting to come to a conclusion and what I'd like to do is bring this out in December. But similar, I've done this before with other things that have come out of committee. I'm going to leave a whole packet of information that is gonna be available in the council office for anybody who would like to see it. This includes all the votes that have ever taken place having to do with the work-off program, the exemption program, the deferral program, so it has the whole history of everything that's ever been done before. It also has all the committee minutes from the beginning of this to where we are right now. There, also there were questions about how many individuals are currently using the exemption program. We have all that information right here. So, what I'd like to do is leave this for, for a week or two and then bring it out in two weeks.
So the information that you got from the assessor is incomplete on the exemptions because it accurately states the number of people who are involved in all of the exemption programs. But many of those programs are state reimbursed, so the numbers are not as big as they are on her chart. In fact, the numbers on her chart are somewhat near twice as big as reality. So you need to contact the assessor, ask her to list the amounts of the state reimbursement on that spreadsheet of the exemptions.
That, I can certainly do that. I do want to let you know that when Barry LaCastas tried to figure out what the equation is and how the state does reimburse us, he said that he has struggled with that at times, understanding exactly how we do get reimbursed. So was that the question, exactly how much we, we get reimbursed from the state or how many are...
I think the council is being misled by the information from the assessor because it does not include the state reimbursement.
Okay, okay. So try to get more clarification on what, how we're being reimbursed.
Right.
Okay. President Cooper?
So is that, Counselor Conti, relative to the forty-one C?
It is relative to all of the veteran programs and the blind program.
Right, but the programs that we're voting on are senior work-off, forty-one C and forty-one A. So I want to make sure that we're, we're...
Doesn't affect the senior work-off program.
Right, so forty-one C is fiscal year eighteen on the chart that we got?
There is a reimbursement on that.
Right, and that's what I think this note says in here, which says state reimbursement for a hundred and eighty-five, which I circled because I think you had a question at seniors. However, the amount reimbursed is not substantial. Did they give us a projected number of what was reimbursed and that's what's confusing? As I was clear till you said that.
It is not, it is not on our list.
Okay.
So I can, I can ask what it has been, yes, this is exactly, you have the exact sheet that you just showed me. And so what Barry LaCastas had mentioned was every year it seems to be a little bit different. He, he hasn't even been able to follow exactly what the equation the state uses. So basically, I think what they're doing is, depending on how many people around the whole state are tapping into the program, that's how they reimburse. It's not an exact, like, they have to go, they have to go based on the whole state. So it's not, this is the equation for Attleboro and if this is how many people you have, this is how much you're gonna get back.
So on her list, she lists several years?
Yes, it goes from two thousand fourteen to two thousand nineteen.
So we should have the numbers for fiscal year eighteen, nineteen, sixteen, fifteen, fourteen, and see what the trend is.
I agree, I agree, so I can certainly do that. And, as you just mentioned, it, it's, it's been pretty consistent from two thousand fourteen to two thousand nineteen. It's gone up a little bit, about thirteen, twenty-five people have utilized the exemption program. But again, I'm gonna leave this in there, I will certainly get that information and then if there's any other questions, people can certainly reach out. Is there anything else? And thank you, Counselor Conti, for meeting with me, I really appreciate it, early on. So that will conclude the business this evening, I'll call for an adjournment.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, you're adjourned.
I'd like to call Public Safety Emergency Emergency Minister at eight thirty-two. I have one motion this evening. From the docket of December third, two thousand nineteen, I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor to transfer fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars from account one-one-two-four-one-zero-zero-zero dash five-seven-eight-three-eight-zero, Citywide Reserve Fund for Capital, to account one-two-one-zero-one-zero-zero dash five-eight-five-one-four-zero, Police Computer Equipment to replace fifty computers in a police department. Second. I had a lengthy discussion with Chief Hagney about this and these computers that we're replacing are so far out of date, they can't even communicate with the courthouse. They won't accept police reports at the courthouse by handing them a report anymore. It's gotta come over the internet or whatever your caller, indirectly into their, into their, their computer over there. I was so confused when I get through talking to Kyle today, I said, I'm gonna take a course at Bristol Community. But that replaces fifty computers and we have a total of about eighty in the police department. But some of them, and thanks to our ALS department upstairs, he's done a great job keeping these band-aided together for this period of time. So, it's needed, necessary. We can't continue doing business at the police department without them. Yes, sir, Mr. Coleman?
I also spoke to Chief Hagney about this a number of weeks ago as he was trying to, to put it together, to, to work through the details and talk through a bunch of it and these are in desperate need, so I'm fully in support of this.
I, I honestly think, and maybe it's not my place to bring it out, but this was brought up a couple of years back, I think, about leasing them over a three-year period, a three-year lease. And that's been shot down by the administration, is this a better way to go? Actually, it's more expensive than leasing them in three years, they're obsolete anyway. So I think they ought to look at that in the future, but the future's the future. Right now, we need fifty-five thousand dollars so they can stay in business over there.
Just a quick question, just on that little comment. Because when Barry was here last week and you asked him about leasing, he, I remember him saying, or maybe it wasn't you that asked him, maybe it was somebody else, but he had said, with, as far as leasing goes, by the time you pay, if you pay it off in five years or three years, you're paying more in interest if you're leasing.
Yeah, but we, we're not talking about equipment, Kate, we're talking about computers.
Yeah, I understand that, it wouldn't be the same.
And computer companies, I think, operate a little differently than an automo, a, a truck or a bulldozer or whatnot. All I know is what was told me by, by Chief Hagney and I take his word.
He would rather lease it than buy him?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
And that was a lot of what the conversation between Chief Hagney and I was about, with whether to buy them outright or lease them. And the industry standard and, and most corporations are moving to this three-year lease, so there's some consistency because computers, I mean, if it's more than three years...
It's the end of three years, I, he said they're obsolete.
Throw it away, right.
And you would know better than me, definitely.
So, so that's sort of the industry best practice is, is to lease. But with that said, where there's the opportunity to, to purchase these out of free cash, my suggestion was to strike while the iron's hot and, and because there's so many to be replaced to just do it now.
We need them now.
Right.
I, I would hope at the next time another department, they would, they would look at the lease more.
But, but Chief Hagney's right, and industry best practice is to, to lease it. Or at least that's what the industry's moved to.
But as I just said, we need them now.
Yep, I saw it.
They, they've come down with the money and it's too late to look at any other option, so. Let's get them up and running over there in the safety of the city and the efficiency of that department. I'm in favor of it myself and I don't think we have any other options. Just question for Lee.
Yeah, I think this is a necessary lease, buy irrelevant at this point, we need to buy them. The other thing to keep in mind with the computers, because I know people here have fifty computers, what do we need that for? As you said, the electronic means and how reports are delivered, how information is garnered. There's several different entities and agencies that the police department uses, a lot of which they have to have the appropriate equipment in order to be able to communicate. You know, I can speak for the registry's behalf, Counselor Conti and I had a conversation about that prior to the meeting, about the changes going on there. There's federal partners, state partners, so this is necessary and I think as, what I'm hearing is an overarching kind of narrative, whether it's with this, whether it's with the vehicles, is we're looking towards how do we get to be a little more proactive with this stuff in terms of whether it's with DPW, having them, you know, be able to get that two hundred thousand dollars worth a year. Because you're right, the technology's gonna continue to change and evolve and it's gonna be obsolete probably if we lease it by the time that lease was over. So I think this is a good first step. Right now, I think that we're, we're planting the seeds on how we're coming up with a more fiscally responsible policy moving forward.
I think Mr. Conti having department heads in this year for capital improvements, DPW definitely needs a revolving situation where they get a budget of two hundred thousand or three hundred thousand, it's in their budget for equipment. Police Department have a budget for replacement of certain equipment, computers and whatnot. Fire Department, same way, most of your departments, should be a line item for replacement. Not wait till it's broken or there's a need like this comes up. There should be a line item somewhere in the budget to take care of things like this as they come up and we can get into a program, other vehicles replacing that oldest one with a new one, moving the units down. I brought it up at the Highway Department. We can't even maintain this equipment if it's on the road all day. You gotta have spares. I mean, our fire chief did a great job of explaining that, I thought, so. Getting back to the computers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, thank you, I have no other business this evening, move for adjournment at eight thirty. Second.
So we're done?
You're gonna take the vote, Peter?
Huh?
All in favor?
I thought I did, they're all in favor?
Second, aye.
Aye?
He just said yes, he did, thank you. Never mind, Todd. I take back everything I said earlier.
Good, because most of it wasn't nice.